All right, why don't we open the meeting at 6 o'clock? Mr. Radek, would you come on there? So I've read through the property assessor's recommendation and the notes that the two of the other select board members have as well.
From our last meeting, yes.
Yes, from our last.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it was the stuff from Mandy that I looked at in the last.
Just wanted to make sure it was in the meeting.
There was no actual request on there for amount of money. I spoke with Mr. Radek last week, and so the amount of their, uh, the request to them, uh, payment is $40,000.
Going back to 2011, if I remember. It's somewhere in here.
It may be in her notes somewhere.
There it is, yeah. Going back to 2006, actually. Mr. Radek, we had a brief conversation when you were here before. I'm having a difficult time wrapping my head around this. You're familiar with the abatement process. You filed for your home twice, right?
I filed, yeah, maybe over two months ago.
The part that's puzzled me is you've gotten your taxes, you've looked at it, I'm sure, right?
The tax, yeah, we discussed that last time.
Yeah. I guess I'm just not understanding how it could go this long without, without you looking at it or questioning it.
I looked at it every year. I just assumed, I think, a long, long time ago, totally, I don't remember that far. I'm guessing that I looked at it and went, well, taxes went up. And I paid them, and then every year after that, it was pretty consistent with that one year, you know? The only time it dropped was a few years ago. It dropped down under 2,000, just under. Prior to that, it was over 2,000 a year.
Go ahead. Well, we, the town went through revaluations in 2011, 2016, 2021. You were sent letters with each revow, and didn't take any action any of those times, right?
But none of those were, they were consistent with the 2006 or '07.
I think, why don't we see where you guys are with this? That, oh, I'll start with you, you've looked at as much material as I have.
I know, I, I don't, um, since this is the first time that we've come up through a situation like this, I don't know what to say, except that, again, it seems that, it is, it is no small amount of money, so it's not easy to say a mistake was made, but it seems like there were many opportunities to realize that a mistake was made. And I think I'm curious how the person who was looking to buy the land noticed so easily that something was amiss.
What's her name, uh, Mandy?
Yeah.
She went to see him, and he, she, she told him that. I went to see her probably a year earlier to get that information, and she didn't give that to me.
To find out the same information, or?
I wanted to know what, what the value of my property was. Then she came up with, her telling me that about a year prior to the kid finding out, she said that she hadn't done large piece of land in a while, and that the number she's gonna give me hasn't been done in a while, so it's probably like 30% more than that now, the value of the property. And then he went to check on it. He checks everything, too.
But did he check with her, or where did he?
He went to check with her.
Yeah. And then at that, so at the, and that was?
That's when she told him that there was a, a building lot on that property. And I don't, I don't, I didn't know that, I never knew it was a building lot, and I don't think there is. And I have all my bills, none of them say, usually when you get your bill, it says, this is your backland, this is what you're gonna pay for current use. And if there's a building lot on it, usually it says the building lot is worth this much. This is what you're getting assessed for the building lot. I get nothing like that. I have just backland, this is how much it is.
Yeah. Not being an assessor and not as removed with it as Mandy is, all I can say is that when, when she found it and made the correction, I don't know what to do about the, the, the vast times, because all, all I can speak of is from my own experience, when I thought I was paying too much, regardless if it was always the same, I checked. And when I could make a change, I did and lowered my bill, but it was on me to do it. So I, I don't know what to say other than that. You know, I probably saved myself that much overtime, too, it wasn't a mistake. But I, I checked my tax bill, I knew what was going on, and I, I changed it. So I don't know what, I don't know if that helps or hinders the conversation, but, I feel part of the, the, the burden of having checked those tax bills was on you, even if a mistake was made. And then I'm gonna have to think about the rest of it for a little bit. So I'm gonna pass this over to Calvin while, while I continue to ponder, but, but I, it's not helping me to say I don't know how to handle, except I'm kind of with Scott in that I find if a lot of money was paid and you didn't like the tax bill, even if it seemed the same, with the amount of the revows that came up and the amount of times that you've been in to question other things, that that could have been questioned.
The only person won thing one time.
Okay.
And it was probably just prior to this going up, the price that that.
Is the lot deemed unbuildable? Or is it a building lot?
Don't even know what a building lot is on its own.
Well, it's a nine acre parcel, correct?
Yeah, nine and a half acres, I think.
Right, and that was subdivided off the big piece initially.
It was never subdivided off.
It was a standard.
It wasn't there when I bought it. When I bought it, it was just one big piece. I subdivided two lots on the road. I never subdivided, I didn't even know about that lot, if there is one. I don't think there ever was. It may have been like maybe in the 1800s, and it was dissolved like years ago. Oh, yes.
I'm just confused as how a nine and a half acre lot is established.
I didn't do it then, you guys did that. Then once they put it on there, and all of a sudden, and it wasn't told to me that it was a nine and a half acre.
So you had one parcel of land that you were paying taxes on, too?
No, I'm paying, they sent me a bill just for 141 acres of backland. It never said so much for backland, and it all would have been like 130 acres of backland and a nine and a half acre building lot, never said that.
But isn't the issue that it was deemed unbuildable, and then the mistake when it got revowed was, it was called buildable? So there always was a second lot that they were looking at, correct?
No. There was never one, when I did this, I have, I had a really good survey, so. The guy who did my surveys, top notch.
Oh, then I'm, then I'm missing something in all the correspondence, I think.
Me too, I thought this was.
He never came up with that either, that there's a building lot there.
I was just under the impression this was a separate lot, it was a known separate lot, and it was deemed unbuildable.
No.
Which drove the surprise of the tax bill being so high.
No.
That's the angle I'm coming from, and I just.
That's what I thought, too, that's why, that's why I'm confused.
Okay, I'm just gonna try to pull a map up and see, because I think I know where the property is. So just a quick question, you said you'd only filed one abatement?
I filed one abatement, that was for my house. Anyway, I, I did a comparison, was that the houses in the area?
Okay. So according to those records, you filed in 2006. Does that sound right?
Could you say that again, I'm hard to hear.
2006.
Yeah, 2006, when I filed the abatement.
But you also filed it in 2009.
In '09, I don't think I filed an abatement in '06, I think it might have been '09.
Okay, this says both.
2006 and 2009.
I don't know about that, not sure. I believe I only filed for one abatement, and that was for the house, my new house.
Okay, so this is why I'm confused, because the information we have says the parcel was created by subdivision in 1999.
Yes.
So, okay, so there, so something was, the, the parcel in question was subdivided in 1999 by you?
Yes.
Okay.
It was divided into two house lots and backland.
So it's the 141 acre lot that was, at that time, deemed unbuildable?
Yes.
The backland?
Yeah, the town deemed it unbuildable, I had to put a road in it.
Because there wasn't enough frontage? Okay. Sorry if I'm, I'm reading through this again, but it, it was unclear to me that, so there are two parcels, your house parcel and then the 141 acre backland.
Yeah, two whole parcels. I did two building lots.
Okay.
And you sold one or you kept it?
I can't hear you.
You sold it or you kept it?
I sold it or I kept it.
Yeah, you said you did two building lots, I just pulled up the map, which is.
Yeah, I built the house on one, I built the house on one, I kept the other one, but I built the other one like several years later, and I sold the house for one.
Okay.
So the only parcel that we're discussing that has the mistake that was deemed unbuildable and then, you know, got on the record as buildable is the 141 acre backland?
Right.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay. And I think we're all on the same page.
Okay.
They built houses by own lots.
Okay, okay.
Nice one, Stowe.
All right, so in 2006, when everything, when we had a town revow, the backland was listed then as buildable, not unbuildable. And that's when the.
I don't have anything written on that. Nothing. Nobody told me it was buildable. If it's buildable, I'll take that price.
Well, um.
I'll get a lot more than $40,000 for it.
So all this information that I'm reading from came from our record, so it's in our record, so there's records of it, and as far as I know, Mandy, when things are revowed, sends out information to this effect, correct?
Yeah.
So you should have it. One would, one would assume.
If you send me something, it's gotta be, I would, I would, if they sent me something and said, hey, you didn't know, but there's a lot back, a building lot back there, so you're being charged more. Then I would say, yeah, okay, that's not written anyplace for me.
Well, here, I guess my question would be, what was the difference in the tax between 1999, when it was called 141 acres of unbuildable backlot, and 2006, when suddenly it was assessed as buildable at 123? What were you paying?
I don't, I couldn't tell you exactly, I didn't look at that, but I think it was like 500 or 600 bucks.
So your tax bill jumped from 500 to 600 bucks up to 123, and, and that didn't make you ask a question about why?
I just assumed it was taxes went up.
From five, from 500 to 123 is a, is a, is a pretty substantial jump.
I can't remember that far.
Okay, okay, well, I just wanted to make sure I understand, because that makes, that makes a difference, too. So I think if we could get, is there a way that we can easily find what the, um, what the, what it was billed at, what the amount was, what the, what the jump was, actually, from 1999 to 2006?
Or what about the current use application for the lot, was there a reason nine acres were left out of current use?
I don't know, that's what I mean, I never saw it, but that, I've never got anything for that. Every year, every year when I get my bill, it should say you're being assessed for nine and a half acre building lot and 130 acres of current use. I'm never gonna build that, I gotta grow 141 acres current use.
Got the tax collecting software, if you want me to look at it?
Yeah, I'd just be curious to see what the current use application was, and if it doesn't jive with the total amount of acreage of that 9 point.
I don't think this is really, I, I don't know really all of it.
It's about the nine acres, really, it's about the 141 back acres.
Right, but if we're saying he's getting taxed on nine acres that are, that are buildable?
No, not the nine acres, 141 acres. That's what we're talking about, not the nine acres. It was 141 that was deemed unbuildable.
Correct.
And then in?
When being assessed for.
Well, 143.
Yeah, but it said 143.2 acres unbuildable lot with 9.2 not in current use, so I'm trying to figure out how is 9.2 not in the current use application?
Oh.
Was it kept out for a reason, because 9.2 not in current use would reflect about $2,000, because I have a lot similar size to the same situation. So I'm just trying to figure out why it wasn't either enrolled in current use, or if it just wasn't included in the application, it was just an oversight. You know, we didn't tally up the numbers equal 143, and when it went through, it went through as 133.
You guys know as much as me, I just heard about it.
Well, and, and yet, all of this would have been noticed when that's what the assessor does, correct? But when the revow and the letters go out, I mean, you, you've gotten, you've gotten all the other revow information, enough that in, um, 2006 and 2009, you came in to ask questions, so you got whatever statements you got then.
2009, and I thought they could do it with the revow as well.
No, it's just, it's just that you got the mail, you got the information.
Yeah, I guess so.
So if other information came out, it just seems like you should have gotten that, too. I, I just wanna make sure that you're getting your mail.
Yes, I get my mail.
Okay, good.
I do.
That's a good thing.
I don't always read it.
No, oh, well, now that's another thing.
The bank actually pays the bill now, so.
Ah, okay, okay.
Right, but I'm having a hard time saying you don't remember, you don't read your mail, you didn't really pay attention. Those aren't really good excuses.
Oh, I know. I just found out about most of this stuff, I'm paying attention now.
Right, but you went from being able to pay attention in 2006 and 2009 for abatements.
That was, I didn't do anything in 2000, I don't believe so, I don't know why that's there. I don't remember that at all. The 2009 was for my house, because I was being charged more than everybody else. I was being charged $10,000 for a fireplace that I didn't have. That was the big one.
Right, but, but you were examining your tax bills with a level of detail that showed that, right?
Yes, I was right in the middle of building it, so.
Right.
It was a different project than land.
Well, I, I think I'd like to see the notices that Mandy sent out. If, if everything went out and was noticed properly, and you get your mail, and you, you read your mail, I don't know what to say. It makes it difficult for me to, to say, it, it makes it difficult for me to, to think that this is a, um, and, and a matter that we want to handle by saying, by just paying. I guess I'm not expressing myself well here. It's, it, it makes it difficult for me to not say that you've got responsibility here. Yes, a mistake.
How much is my responsibility worth?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, worth $40,000 today. And in reality, that 40,000, I could have invested it. I've been paying the town every month, I mean, every year, for the taxes. I missed a couple of times back years ago, I was like a week late or something like that.
Yeah.
And they charged me 12% on when I'm late. If I did that now, you guys would, I lost 12% on 40,000 for all this time, plus the investments I go to make.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I hear you when you say that. I, I, again, for me, it's difficult that if the bill for that went from a couple hundred bucks to almost 123,000, that's when you ask a question, whether you think the taxes have gone up a little bit or not. So I think, I, I, I feel part of the responsibility is for you, and I'm not sure that's 40,000 dollars worth.
Where are you getting a couple hundred bucks to 123,000?
Because when I asked you what the, 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 um, the taxes were you were paying on the lot in 1999, when it was deemed unbuildable, you said a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, that was at first, and I think by 2006, it had gone up. But where's the 123,000?
Okay. Gotta go all the way down. Oh, jeez. I didn't scroll down far enough. Well, I don't know where we're going to do that.
Yep.
What do you think? Do you want to table this for till our next meeting?
I'd like to see the, the current use application and see if the numbers don't jive, and if it, if it truly was a clerical error, I think I'd be more have to try work at something, but to echo that, I mean, there is a, there's inherent responsibility when it comes to assessing the bills and taxes. 20 years is a long time, it's a lot of money. But, you know, if I don't pay my bills or I neglect on them because I didn't pay attention, I have to take responsibility. I just, I wanna see the current use application, see whether, if there was something lost in translation or not recorded properly, or, you know, stuff does happen, you know, I'm not, I'm not giving benefit of the doubt to one or the other, but I'd like to see it all before, you know, you take a step in the direction, I think, I think that'd be responsible, I think you do.
Agreed.
And this, can I also just, because I didn't, I obviously didn't scroll down far enough to see this very last page with all the handwritten numbers that were paid in taxes. This doesn't say at the top what this is being paid on unless it's described in here, what these numbers refer to. This is all?
I think that's 140 acres, I believe, that was my conclusion, sorry. I'm assuming that's right, your handwriting?
Yeah.
Okay, this is all on the 140 acres starting in 2007?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And, um, I would like to see, because, I mean, you don't have to copy before, but I can go in and ask Mandy, because I'd like to see what her communications were. So I should read and just see what they.
You guys want the copies of the notices that were sent out?
Yeah.
And copies of the current use application.
Yeah. I think that would make things more clear.
All right, we need to look at more stuff.
I don't think you guys looked at anything this past two weeks.
Well, we, we did.
You did?
Yeah. But, as I said, I'm finding it difficult that you weren't paying attention, you didn't read, you didn't notice.
No. I read all the stuff that came. I might have even read, I'm pretty sure I read the, when the taxes go up, but that may have had nothing to do with what's going on.
I think it does.
It didn't say anything saying.
What's going on.
Yeah, it didn't say anything about your paying taxes for a building lot on that land. You know, it's just that I'm paying, I'm paying for that, for, uh, what do you call it? Help me out.
Backland.
Yeah, backland.
Yeah, and, and most of the tax bills come through with, the way they're listed on our cards are, if it's, if there's a building on it, it's listed separately, and then the land is listed separately.
That's right.
And that's how it's, that's how it's listed.
Yeah, I didn't get that. I got just backland, no mention of a piece of land on it, a lot on it.
All right, we'll take a look.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good, thanks, guys.
Want some more, thank you.
So I'll be back, you gonna let me know?
Um, yeah, do you wanna schedule an hour?
I'll talk with, uh, Mandy on Wednesday, we'll try and get all the stuff, and then we'll look at our agenda from the 19th.
Okay.
And then I'll give you a call and let you know when to come in. Okay.
All right?
Good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Radek.
Thank you, yeah. Good luck.
All right. Where do you want to go from here?
I think we, let's see. Oh, Alice is here to talk about the letter from the school. Well, from the school board, well, it's not from the school board.
I was gonna say, it's not from.
Right, right, it was, it was a notice about a, uh, uh, house bill.
Yes.
Uh, to the finance committee?
The Senate Finance Committee, yes.
The Senate Finance Committee.
Um, I actually have a copy if you guys would like that, I didn't know.
Yes. Thank you.
It was sent out in the email, and unfortunately, you guys didn't get the email when it was sent out. And so I put it on the agenda, and then I just, you guys, and you got that? So.
Gotcha.
We have a problem, there you go.
It's, it's not from me, I am just gonna start by saying that my views and opinions are my own, they are not reflective of the Shaker Regional School Board. Um, I don't speak for the Shaker Regional School Board here tonight.
Understood.
So, um, just wanted to bring this to your attention, because it is, um, a, a bill, or, well, not a bill, it's a letter that's going to the Senate Finance Committee. The Senate Finance Committee needs for the New Hampshire State Budget, uh, every other year, and, um, these letters have been going, uh, not gaining too much traction, but, uh, starting in May 2021, there was about 80 signatures on the first one of local officials and school board members, um, urging the state to, uh, properly fund education in the state of New Hampshire. Um, so that first letter went out, there was about 80 signatures on it. In May 2023, there was another one with about 150 signatures. This current letter, um, is approaching 450 signatures, uh, currently. So, um, again, my own beliefs are that, you know, the current economic realities that we're facing, um, with the less than meaningful increases to the state education aid year after year.
Got it, yeah.
Places an enormous strain on the taxpayers. Um, so, uh, time is kind of short, because the Senate Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow for the budget meeting. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration and reading that letter, and, and consideration in signing it.
Yeah, the, um, it's, the deadline is tonight.
Yes.
So we can sign electronically, you can also sign individually, as well as the board, I believe.
Okay.
And I can see that both you and Randy have signed, we can vary so far.
Yes, Randy signed back in February when she was in the press board.
Okay, good. Do, um, I'll dig if I count it down, see how many 50 signatures, but how many towns?
Uh, I do not know that number off the top of my head, but I think, again, this was at about 5:15, I got an email back from Kayla, because I did ask how many there were, I think she said it was 432 at about 5:15 this evening, so.
Well, it's nice, though, because a lot of them, when you scroll down, are not just individual signatures, there are boards and committees that have signed.
So that's what they're asking. They're asking for local officials to, to look at this and, you know, voice their opinions.
Yes.
So that's, that's all I had, I don't know how many questions I'm gonna be able to answer, because again, I did not write this, this is not coming from the Shaker Regional School Board, this is just, um, you know, for your consideration.
Oh, there we go. 100. No, two years ago, it was 152, representing 70 cities and towns. Well, I don't know what the board would do, but I would sign it personally if. Also, I don't need to answer.
Yes.
No.
Oh, all right.
But we, if we do it as a board, we need to do it tonight, which we should probably do it while we're meeting.
Agreed. Calvin, I know you looked at this letter, I suspect.
I think it would be, I would encourage, I think signing it would be, you know, putting out the right face, especially for the town, and, you know, showing that we do care about our taxes, we care about education. You know, that would be a big impact, I think, locally, if this did actually go through the budget, and something came out of it.
Any promotion?
Big emotions is sign the letter to. Big emotions to sign the letter to, from Kayla to the senate finance committee.
Yes, there you go.
Anybody want me to second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
All right. Click this link to sign electronically. Oh, wait, I can do it right from here. Yes, you can. Click this link.
And you can either sign for the entire board from that link, or you can sign it individually, but to add your name.
Not to be, okay, in the nearest property. Hold on, it's telling me I'm signing as the Canterbury Farmers Market, that doesn't help. Somebody else may have to sign, because I can either sign as myself at Canterbury News Letter, or the Canterbury Farmers Market.
I can assign as administrative assistant?
Yes, please. Oh, it'd be good. Though the Canterbury Farmers Market is very pro education, so.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you drawing to our attention, Alice. Let's see.
Yeah, are you gonna go see Andrew Golinski at the, uh?
I read the book. Um, I don't know if I can, I don't know how, how are the cross schedules?
Okay.
Okay. Andrew will have to wait, yes.
New business?
Thank you, Calvin, for signing that.
Yep. Sir, are you here about a purchase of property?
I am.
Why don't you come on up?
I can shoot you into.
Great.
I've gone to.
Yeah. I'm just a second.
So I can finish.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
As you were.
You can stay there, you don't have to go back and come forward.
Oh, yeah. You always good to have a man.
Oh, do we have those too? Or do you just have it?
Just one, just one in the file.
Yeah, actually, I'll pass that one down, 'cause I've very thoroughly searched where it is.
Not if you don't go through what this road is.
Canterbury, Georgia?
Okay.
And show it?
Oh, I see, I see, there's the thing, there's the dot, there's the, much more better. Thank you, I thought this was. Have you seen the map?
I see, watch it. Good, Calvin.
Thank you.
All right, so you're Mr. Smith.
I am.
Very good, and what I am looking at, and I'll read it aloud. I, Kenefe Smith of Twenty-four Robin Shore Drive, Canterbury, New Hampshire, would like to put a four thousand dollar bid on sixty-five Canterbury Shore Drive Lot Seventy-One. I have attached a purchase and sales agreement on sixty-one Canterbury Shore Drive Lot Seventy-Two, and would like to combine the two lots into one. I'm very pleased at the time, would like only to sell two of Butters, and we're making, and we're just one larger lot, so we aren't overbuilding on small lots or overdeveloping, in already overdeveloped area.
Correct. I found out a couple of years ago that that's what you guys did, and I was, Lord, extremely happy that that's what you do, since we are way overdeveloped in that area. I grew up in the area and.
Did you?
Yeah. I grew up on the, on the Wall Lane.
Okay.
And I moved away, and as I got older, I was after the house, and now.
Okay.
Got it, and just the difference in the amount of houses there would be, you know? Is when I heard all that, and then this probably came up, and I'm like, thinking maybe a retirement home, and for myself, over there, 'cause we're on the house. Way bigger than I did.
Yeah.
But I can't move, for a couple of years anyways, 'cause I told my family, said she'll never, I won't move until she passes, because I'm a life support. So I did love the neighborhood, I loved the people in the neighborhood, the associations and great Jonas, amazing president, and that's the not being president, but, um, yeah, I did like it, make one large lot, you know, make a nice little house there for myself. I had no intention of buying another property until I saw that off the sale, and then to put all this together, and it was a lot of good.
So you're just buying this, um, the lot number seventy-two now, and you wanna buy this at the same time?
At the same time, that way I can combine them, I want to also be done to, to one property, and we can deal with that.
Any input?
So what typically happens is, in this case, um, the town, um, has been forbidden here, is trying to sell just two of Butters, um, and then combine the lots, have the, have the sale go through with the restriction that the lots are either combined, or that there's no residential building on the second lot, on the, the previous town or lot.
Yeah.
So what would happen is, we would wait until your purchase of the lot goes through.
Right.
And then we would do a sale of the town or lot to you separately, and then you could combine them after that.
Correct, now that's what I, I didn't expect, to be honest, to have this thought.
Yeah, I, I, we would have to, we would wait until the, um, deed is recorded. When you buy that, 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 uh, number, uh, seventy-one, or seven, uh,
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Once that deed is recorded in your name.
Yeah.
The town would, uh, if the select would agree, they would, they would, uh, we would do the paperwork for, uh, Lot Seventy-One.
Correct. No, no, I totally expected that, I just wanted this brought up somewhere else, I'd like to, I'm hoping to push this within the next week, the sale of the lot, for the sales. And that way there, everybody knows what's going on, and hopefully I can do it all at once, and then.
Yeah.
And that's all made very clear when the second lot is sold, that the restrictions that are on there are just.
Correct, the paperwork that, that, uh, Mr. Smith would receive from the town, showing the deed, that the, or the the recording would show that that is, uh, has to be combined with, or other deed, um, with Lot Seventy-Two, so.
Any further discussion?
Not from, not, not from this, no, thank you.
I'll make a motion, and then we accept Mr. Smith's bid of four thousand dollars for Lot Seventy-One, sixty-five Canterbury Shore Drive, contingent upon the sale of Seventy-Two.
Seventy-Two, yeah.
And the deed restrictions that we discussed.
Yeah, all that, perfect.
All right?
I call you, and I, so let us know, uh, when you go through with the purchase. Our assessor will go to Merrimack County Registered Deeds, they'll make sure it's, uh, recorded, and then we'll do the paperwork here with you, we'll set up, we'll do the, uh, sale paperwork with you, and record the new deed, and.
Time limit.
Oh, yeah, where have we been put at? That, thank you, Calvin, ninety days?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, ninety days for the sale, the first sale to go through, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully that'd be.
Before you leave, actually, so I'll need a second, a motion?
Yes, I'll second that.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, now you should go. Thank you very much.
You just say that, Ethan, thank you.
Have a good night, sir. All right, so that was, off to the line. And you can go back up through history if you'd like. Yeah, yeah, why don't we sign some stuff? Through that. All right, first is a, that looks like an accounts payable manifest in the amount of thirty thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars and seven cents.
Uh, so moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I forgot to say.
Oh, wait, I don't have a pen, may, my, I forgot all my pens in here, that doesn't help.
Calvin, looks like a second accounts payable?
Yes, Mary did it in two different ones, because this one covers the rest of April, and then that one starts in May, so that we should file them separately.
And there's gotta be.
There's three things in there.
Oh, yes.
One of them is the school payment.
Yeah.
One of them is, uh, transfer to Sam's office for means, which is an accounting thing, not an actual expense, and then the third thing is the T-one repairs.
Oh, for the engine?
The engine bill is twenty-five thousand dollars. It is.
Wow.
The in-chassis repair.
Hmm, they drove it from, successfully drove it from Manchester to Canterbury.
Okay. Hope that's not the, the only bit of life that we're left to do.
I hope it's cheap dollar, for twenty-five thousand dollars.
All right, so this accounts payable manifest is six hundred four thousand dollars, one hundred sixty-seven and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Wow.
Let me hear the record. Fortunately.
Carried that truck.
Thank you. That to you. All right. Can these be from Sam?
Those from Amanda.
From Mandy, okay.
And I put the.
So yield tax levy?
Oh, is that, okay.
I put a post-it on it so that you could see the map.
Thank you, okay. I appreciate that. So, uh, a yield tax levy for map two thirty-one lots one and two in the amount of five thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and two cents. And we don't need a motion, we just sign those, right? Let's take it, uh, six, ten.
What was the amount of, uh, Scott?
Five thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and two cents. You're welcome.
Timber taxes are the other current.
Um. Should be timber.
Timber.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Got the two, right, two timber taxes.
Does, does that mean they're done, 'cause the trucks have been?
Yes.
Going up and down like crazy, still.
Um, in summer.
I don't, I don't know if that's, I don't know if it's, if it's finished or not.
But they usually do the timber tax at the end, or?
Usually, but I don't know, besides that project, they might submit. We have this, uh, yellow second page, too?
Yeah, I think there's a couple places there.
Okay.
Yeah, that is a huge project. Is a huge project.
Yeah, I heard they're gonna get in twenty-three too.
Yeah.
'Cause they got too muddy, let out too early to finish it.
Actually went up and looked at the road.
All right, I think we've caught. All right, next is notice of intent to cut water timber for map two oh five, lot number three, it's a personal on Old Misery Road.
Do we need to motion, or we're just signing it?
No, I think we don't need a motion, just sign.
Yeah.
Does that say Old Misery Road? Is that different than Misery Road? Why does it say Old Misery Road?
It does say.
We don't have two Misery Roads in town, do we?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Just checking.
No, it was discontinued.
Okay.
Add to our list.
The, the, the ma, the, the map is, it's just misery, okay, yeah, that was the, um, mistake by the applicant.
It took Calvin more work to do, so.
Well, if he lived there forever, and they used to call it Old Misery Road.
That's where the town is.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a new Misery Road somewhere that we had to worry about, that would be, yeah. Okay.
All right, uh, last item is the, uh, payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents.
Uh, so moved.
Second, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye. What was that number again, Scott?
Fifty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents.
Sorry, your signatures are getting worse as time goes on.
I think mine can get worse.
I, I think it could.
Yep. Thank you. Turn that over, I know that one you read. All right, next is minutes.
So I just sent them out this morning, so I can't, I don't know if you need time to read. Come on, so twenty-one?
No, I don't, I don't. It ain't been a rainy day, nothing better to do? Read through minutes.
You have time to read them?
I, I read them in the truck.
Oh, okay. Um, so the, um, the only things I got were from medical, so, um, you can do as amended, but you don't need to detail all the type of those.
All right, so looking first at the public portion of the meeting from April twenty-first, uh, motion to accept as amended.
Be, before you motion, there was grammatical, but there was one, does that, the one place where things were moved? Was that correct? There was, we went into private, and then there was a whole benefit?
I didn't move it.
'Cause that, yeah, that was correct. 'Cause we, you went into executive session, in the executive session, you approved the welfare manifest, not public information, so that's. Even though we were in the, even though we were in, we didn't have to come out to do that little bit of public and then go back in?
No.
Okay.
The discussion was, the discussion was about it, and then.
Okay, I just, that's just a decision that you made in executive session that is public knowledge.
Perfect, okay, now I understand how that works.
No, that's fine, that's all, sorry, discontinued.
Yours, yeah. So I made a motion to accept the, uh, April twenty-first minutes as amended.
Uh, still moved.
I'm sorry. Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Turning our attention to the executive session from that same meeting, April twenty-first.
All right, I think that'll be the end.
Okay.
Anybody have any?
No, please just pause.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and if you want to pass it, those.
You need to pass back or?
Exactly.
Yep, that's correct.
Only.
All right, so I think that brings us to new business, treasure house at the transfer station. So that was a letter, or a. So that was a letter or a-
Email.
Yep.
Yes.
Everybody have a chance to read that email?
Yes, is it okay?
Is it okay if I pull it up just like a minute longer?
Yep.
I do have a copy of it if someone needs.
No, I did have a chance. I think you passed it on to us, didn't you?
I did, yeah. Yes, this came to me, like, or along with you guys.
From Ken.
Yeah.
Do you, do you just have a date that you sent that, Ken?
It's the first of the calendar. Wait, it's been Wednesday, I think, or Tuesday, I think the thirtieth.
Okay, there's.
Alright, so it looks like, um, they're having some issues at the treasure house. But also, Rich Markku is asking about the, someone made a decision to start accepting, um, things like old coffee pots, lamps, and Rich's concern is over liability. And he says he sees it as a way for people to sidestep the fee schedule for, uh, the town accepting those items.
I'm not sure I'd see more into it than, um, Madeline, who's very enthusiastic, uh, about keeping the treasure house open and encouraging people to bring stuff. That since she saw that the, uh, I think she says in her, um, the notice that she sent to the newsletter, that since the whatnot is accepting more, um, that, that are accepting. I don't know if the, I thought I read this, it said the whatnot is accepting corded items. But upon reviewing the policy, end up considering the whatnot. So, I'd like to know where the policy is, because I don't ever remember seeing one. And, um, I think it would just be easy to say, you know, Madeline, uh, please don't accept corded lamps. What, what more do we really need to?
Yeah. Well, I don't know how, they can't, at the treasure house itself, there's no electricity.
Correct.
So they can't check an item to make sure it's in working condition.
Not there, they're not going to.
I don't remember them ever accepting corded stuff. So, for that very reason, you couldn't tell if it worked.
Right.
I mean, they accepted a lot of stuff that they don't accept now, like, you know, books and fabric and stuff like that, that's understandable, but I don't think they ever took plug-in stuff.
Right.
So, um. So what is, what is, Rich just really wants us to weigh in on what we think about the treasure house accepting corded things? I'd say no. I think that's, that's kind of easy.
I, I'd agree with him as well. So, I think there's his guidance.
But a, but a bigger question would be, who actually is overseeing the treasure house people? Because it's unclear to me here, you know, um, who is? Because, you know, Ken and I talked about it a little bit this morning, it used to be a, a separate group of volunteers. It wasn't the solid waste committee that was running the treasure house stuff or making policy. They just, they were, I don't know if they made policy or they were just finding volunteers. That part of the, of the equation, I don't know.
I have never seen a policy form of the treasure house, what they accept, what they don't accept. Again, it was, my interaction has been that we needed to get volunteer waivers for anybody that worked up there. And that they worked with the transfer station staff to determine what they would take and what they wouldn't. Based on, is there a charge at the transfer station? If there is, then the treasure house wouldn't take it.
Right.
As a matter of fact. Just to avert a charge for it. So, I, I didn't realize that they had policies or written policies.
I, I'm like, I really doubt they, they do. But, I mean, I know that after they had a big clean out, uh, maybe it was during COVID. Um, and they got all the books and the fabric out, they were having a big roting problem. Uh, and all the books were always being gnawed on and the fabric and being gested in and all of that. And then they had signs up everywhere, but who did the signs? Or they got written into policy, or they just posted them, the volunteers who were cleaning it? I mean, I can find that out. I can ask Madeline herself, if you want me to, because she's always submitting to the newsletter and I've talked to her several times. And when I go to the next, um, solid waste committee meeting next week, I can ask as well if they have any information. But as far as you know, on our books, on the town books, there's no policy.
I don't have any copy of any policy.
Then I'll see if the solid waste committee does. I can also ask, uh, Russell Fields and who, who chaired it. Russell, Emily was there.
Yep.
Stephen Roche should know.
And, uh, Madeline sent out an email on the twenty-ninth of April asking for volunteers.
Yeah, she's been asking for a lot of volunteers and she's been very gun-tall and put a lot of enthusiastic things in the, in the newsletter where we hadn't heard from somebody in a long time, so.
Yeah.
I think this is, you know, her email just sounds like Madeline being enthusiastic.
Yep.
And not really thinking about the corded issue thing.
Yes. So, I will pass on to the solid waste committee that the selectmen don't want them to accept corded items up there.
Correct.
And-
At the treasure house.
At the treasure house. Are you gonna talk to Madeline about that or do you want me to try and contact her?
I'll be happy to talk to her.
Okay.
I'd appreciate a reminder from you that I just said I would do that, but yes. I'll write it right here.
Anything else on the treasure house?
No.
I think, Ken, unless you've got any new business?
Yes. There's one more in the new business folder, should be.
So, yeah.
Friends of the Canterbury Center.
Yep.
Like to, they, they sponsor the Fourth of July hot dog
Yep.
event there every year. And I guess informally, they have allowed, or people have informally brought some alcoholic beverages there. They would like to make sure that the selectmen are okay with that. The police chief was in today, but we had this discussion. He didn't feel it was a problem, it's a BYOB, it's on town property.
Yeah.
All, there's no open container law in the town. So preventing people from, from having alcohol beverages, uh, in, on public property. That would be a town ordinance. There's no state law that prohibits it. All the other laws surrounding alcoholic beverages would be enforced. But, uh, he didn't feel, he, he wanted to make sure that the selectmen were okay with it.
Yeah.
I know this has come up with discussions about rifling the town wall. Our insurance company, uh, particularly with the building and things like that, they felt that, they didn't, they didn't think it was the right thing to do. This is the, the town center at the gazebo.
Yeah.
Uh, Fourth of July, it's a fairly, it's a family event, it's not anything else. There is certainly a liability there that we would, we would take on, but at the same time, again, this is up to you guys and I would be able to do it.
Well, if we don't have a, um, an open container law and, and at the farmer's market, it was perfectly legit to have people, we had a beer vendor to be able to buy a beer.
But they have to have permission from the town to do that.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
But people could also, but people have bought beers at the Canterbury store and walked outside and sat in the gazebo and drank them, correct?
Informally.
Yeah.
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 So this is more formal.
They can't, they can't consume it on the property of the store because of liquor laws.
Right.
So they can't sit on the front porch, but they can go up to the gazebo.
They can go to the gazebo. But again, this is an event that's sponsored by a group where they are more or less assuming some responsibility.
So, how is that different than the farmer's market? Because we have, we, we have a lot of insurance.
Because the, the, uh, alcohol was, was being consumed at the farmer's market, was being sold by a vendor as, um, samples.
No. They were selling cans of beer.
Paperwork that I got, it said they were going to be selling two ounce samples. They could sell a bottle of beer, but they could not consume that bottle of beer on the premises.
Oh.
They need to amend the paperwork itself.
Well, that, I'm wondering if that's why we had the wine people there. Because they were-
That should have been the same thing, they could consume samples of the two ounces, but they could not consume more than that. They couldn't sell a six ounce glass of wine.
No.
Sell a two ounce sample. Or they could sell a bottle that was sealed.
Correct.
But they couldn't sell a glass.
A glass of wine, but what about a sealed?
A sealed bottle they could sell.
Or a sealed can.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct, so that's what they were doing, just a sealed can.
Yeah, because Ken Barrow was there and he was selling two ounce, uh, samples. But he could sell a growler.
But that was ages ago, like, two years ago, we had, we don't have any beer selling now.
And the wine was the same thing, they had to, they had to talk to the town. We got paperwork from the town from them, from the vendor.
It was the-
Said that they could, they could do that.
It was the, um, wildflower, um,
Yep.
And they were selling cans of beer. This is long after Steve Alvin.
Okay.
Uh, sealed cans of beer.
And they, they could do that.
Yeah, okay.
As long as, as long as they have liquor license to sell.
Correct, they did.
Yeah.
That's all set, okay, I just was wondering if-
Can't be consumed on the property, but you can sell it.
Okay. Alright, so, um, family friendly event in the center, alcohol, I can't, I think, fireworks. People aren't going to be coming and getting roaring drunk at the family fireworks with their kids there, I can't imagine it.
It's a family event.
Fine to eat.
Yeah.
And again, all other liquor laws pertain.
Yeah.
Right, if they get in a car and they're drunk and the police catch them, then, you know, um, or if they are, you know, there are, there are laws against, uh, um, public drunkenness, if they're, you know, they can be, you know, if there's, uh, can't think of the term, the police use.
Will there be some, will there be a police presence at the hot dog, um?
This one, this.
Yeah.
Alice is on the committee, she can maybe answer.
Okay.
What was the question?
Are you gonna have police at these events? Are you guys paying for the police?
That's the question.
Um, that's actually this, the question here, because the issue, there's a section allowing alcohol, but the issue is that they would need to pay for an officer to be there. So they're looking for an exemption to not, not to sit there as long as people are doing BYOB.
Gotcha.
That's what we're asking.
So they're just asking for the rules that have always been in place.
So five to, five to-
Life, literally, they need us to-
Yes.
Yes, so we just need you guys to sign a little note on the bottom saying, it's okay if you don't pay for a police officer here. If you so choose.
I mean, because I've only been in town eleven years, I've never seen an issue with it in the center for Fourth of July or any other events.
I don't.
Yeah.
So long as the hot dog people aren't selling beer or encouraging beer or- I, I-
You sure it's fair?
I don't know if this is gonna be-
Hot dogs and beer?
I think we're-
Cooking hot dogs and beer?
He might try to sell you insurance, but he's not gonna try to sell you beer.
Oh, then, like-
Alright.
I think that'd be okay with it.
I agree. Do we need a motion or just?
Yeah, I think you should have a motion.
Alright, so, I'm not sure what I'm making a motion for, but-
That you can-
Speak, speak and we will say if that's what we would-
To allow, here, if I see. That way I'll, I'll craft something.
Allow something without a police officer.
Yep, uh, the function, uh, wow, all these dates. Alright, so, this looks like a multi, it's covering a multi-day, multiple days event then, right? You know what?
It's, oh, I just, so there, yes, there's, so it's not only the Fourth of July, but there is also these summer sessions in the center.
Okay.
So there are four, like, music sessions that are happening, um, June twenty-sixth, July seventeenth, August eighth, August twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So, it's for those five events.
Yep, alright, so I'll make a motion that we allow, uh, alcohol, a BYOB, uh, alcohol without a police officer being present on June twenty-sixth, July five, July seventeen, August seven, and August twenty-eighth. Yeah, make it, okay, looking for a second?
Uh, se- uh, yes, I second it.
All those in favor, aye? Alright, I think we did it.
We didn't, we didn't need to say, um, um, events hosted by friends of Canterbury Center, did we? You didn't say that, did you?
I don't think I did.
I will include it.
There you go.
I've had, yeah.
Because I'm not sure I can say all that again.
I think everybody here understands.
Yeah. So we're specific about which events we're talking about, not just random events, but ones hosted by them.
Right, well, and also on those specific ones, so. Alright, I think that brings us to the bottom of the new business. Looking at the old business. Where do we start with code of conduct? Which-
Do you mind if I take you on a tour or?
Well, please do.
I think this was forgotten. Um, you have two different documents in your pretty folders.
Yep.
You have the latest draft of the code epic slash conduct, which has now been renamed to just code of conduct and everywhere in the document has been changed to just conduct, because it's confusing to have two words. On the first page, the, where under purpose, um, the purposes of this code of conduct are to, that section was moved up. Um, and two of the bullet points were combined because they were kind of redundant, so, um, that's the main change that happened over there. Um, there were a couple different small changes like grammar and rephrasing. Um, the next big change is on page four. This is under the section of all board chairs have a responsibility to. And Beth brought up, um, she, she actually brought it up for a different section of where should it specify that, um, if there's like grant reporting that needs to get done? So let me read the comment that she said. Oh, right, so Beth suggested putting it under the time commitment section as like if there's, if a board agrees to do, either work for a grant or like applying for a grant or something, then they need to actually do it. And I put it under board chairs have the responsibility to, I suggested adding, ensure that their board completes tasks required by law. And examples are grant reporting, policy updates, document retention.
That's a much better place to put it.
Because that is, if there's grants involved and they are responsible for doing something and that's a legal requirement and the chair should be the one heard in those tasks, like, even if they delegated it to a representative in there. That seems like a good spot where-
Perfect, thank you.
That's a, a better place to put it. Alright, so then, the next big change is, um, on page four, select board members. So this is kind of combining the two documents that we have going. Um, and so, a suggestion was putting it at the bottom of this, so like having a section, like, most of it applies to everybody, but then have a section that applies to select board members. The alternative that I am proposing is the second document in, that I handed out, is how to select board.
Which I love, Alex.
So this is a, this is a-
Better than selecting the dummies.
Right.
So this is, I, I was, um, because we talked about in here, individual boards should have their own mission statement, job descriptions, term of office, et cetera. Um, so I thought this, the, the select board duties would be better broken out into a select board job description. And this could serve as a example for other boards for how we want their job descriptions to be. And a lot of this was copied and pasted from the NHMA job descriptions, so it would be an easy thing for other boards to do. And then it's really the, the duties section that is very customized to the select board. And that way we could take it out of the code of conduct, because it's not really, it's not really conduct as much as like- it's not really conduct as much as like how it responds to a lot of the things your responsibility.
So this whole section, page four and.
And five.
And five would come out. Does it, does it get added to this or does this already include this?
This already includes.
Okay.
Includes that.
Okay. So I didn't, couldn't tell, it wasn't exactly the same language though, was it, or was it?
Uh, it's not exactly the same.
Okay.
Yeah, so just a quick question, in both documents I see, um, looking at how to select board.
Yeah.
Um, if you go to the third page, um, titled select board reps to board slash committees are expected to.
Oh, yeah.
The second bullet point is where I have a question.
Yes, I have that question too. That's right, that was another thing I had. So, um, that is a question that you guys, I wasn't sure when I made this draft, what you had decided. Um, so if you are the select board rep to the planning board, you get to vote. Are you supposed to vote based on your opinion or based on what you think the board will decide? I don't know what it is.
So I, I think that's asking us to, um, this is just my opinion. I don't know that I can predict, it's almost like trying to look into the future, how you think that, that these two will think is sometimes a challenge.
Hey.
Well, it's not just.
No, no, I don't.
You know, others as well, but, um, so I, I think anyway, and what I've been doing is, you know, you can, um, I think I sometimes try to put my own personal opinion aside and vote for what I think is best for the town.
What's best for the town, okay. Not personal or what you think the BOS, which is, yeah, neither. So vote based.
That is what the planning board members should do also.
Yeah.
Agreed.
No, I had, I had, my comment was that even if you're voting your own opinion, you should darn well vote the same on the planning board and as a select board member, even if it is your own opinion. But I think it's probably better worded to say for what's best for the, that's more true.
Yeah.
Okay, then I can change that to be, oh, based on what you think is best for the town.
Yeah, right, that's what I, I've tried to do.
Do we, do we need to say, um, be consistent? Be consistent?
Hmm, it's probably not that idea.
I know that. Between the two boards?
Yeah.
Because that's.
Yeah.
It's hard, especially if you're gonna book one bunch of. Yeah, there's one, one dynamic, one place and one, and one in the other, yeah. So I would say consistency is, is important.
And while we're together, because this is another difficult one, what's the time commitment to be on the select board?
That was not.
Yeah, I've really, I've never stopped. It, I mean, for all of us, you know, the phone calls, you know, go to the store any, any hour of the day or night and someone usually will stop you with an opinion or a, or a complaint.
I would say time committed is, you have to be willing to be available.
I wonder if we say that it would, it involves a substantial commitment.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
It, it's hard to put a number on, I mean, I think you're prepared to be approached in public. That too, and criticize.
Or on your front porch. Which is fine.
Yeah. That is only issue, you know.
But, but I think substantial is a good way to put it and I think be, be, um, yeah.
Okay.
Be prepared to be volunteered for things and stopped after questions.
Right.
That's part of it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anything else that you see right now? Under recommended training, that's a tough one because, um, I would say almost. Yeah, well, I would say almost any, I mean, like, uh, going to the zoning board basics, uh, going to the whatever. I mean, that's not, I'm not on the zoning board, but I darn well should know what they're doing. So going to any of the training.
So there's a lot of stuff that I haven't included in here. I learned at the local officials workshop, um, because I learned a lot about things that you guys are supposed to, to know. And, okay, it's everything.
Yeah, it's everything, yeah.
But I, I could add those to this document as this.
Hard roads to travel and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
You, you could basically say, you could list some and then say, you know, um, check, uh, anything that NHMA offers.
Yeah.
And.
Or just attending, I mean, just attending meetings too, as a spectator and seeing how they operate and options. That's a lot of training too.
Yeah.
You don't want to scare people into doing jobs. But that's a lot of training.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, certainly in my years of involvement, you know, people sometimes come in like a, like a comet and then they very quickly tail off and, and just stop coming. I think on the planning board, we have that issue right now. Yeah, so.
No, I'm not sure I'd list everything, but just, you know, as examples.
For select board, this document is a little bit harder, because there's so much. But for like the planning board, it would be a little bit, like, we do different trainings, but.
Right. Yeah, that are directly.
Yeah, those are important, yeah, with everything changing in zoning and planning regulations, those would be, I would just say mandatory, but definitely insightful.
Yeah, well, and it's really now all depending state legislation, whichever way that, that plays out, so.
Well, did you, you know, I'm just looking back up, if we can fact track for a moment, you're under time commitment, regular board, you know, being on call for emergencies, but also being available for conversation with residents.
I'm gonna add, um, people stopping you in public, or calling you, and all of your boundaries will be gone.
Very true.
People showing up in the house.
Yep.
At seven AM.
Yep.
Alright, so, um, if there's anything else at this meeting, I will again make a new draft, send it out, ask for comments, make another draft right before the next meeting, and we'll continue until we're done.
And you've got the other draft of how to, how to XX your, you know, whatever. This is kind of a template for.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Alright, that brings us on to discontinued roads.
Yeah.
I will prefer it to.
This is like.
Our newest expert.
You see, no, I, after last meeting, I started doing some digging, almost a lot of digging, so. Um, reached out to people, uh, legal people, sought some advice, reached out to web, uh, most of surveying recommendations, et cetera. The whole nine yards. Long story short is, we gotta do a little bit more tracking down. Um, I talked to Ken, I think I'm gonna do the NHMA class on the roads, I think it's in.
Cool.
Four weeks.
Okay.
Oh, the hard road to travel is good.
Yes. Yeah, hopefully they graded that road that week, but, no, I'm gonna try to get some more information, because some of these, um, issues that we're having are sort of in a gray area, where it's interpretation, you know, if the town, one of the, one of the interpretations I've been given was if the town didn't accept the road, if it was my road from your house and it was whatever, I don't think it goes away. The town has accepted them in the past, and it was a town meeting vote, potentially it could be discontinued. So it's just a lot of the, the little clarifications. I've looked over the old maps from the road committees, the discontinued roads, what's represented on our new maps and trying to figure out what's a priority. Um, you know, I spoke to Ken briefly this morning when I went in there. And, uh, I think something that we might want to consider is once we start getting some clarification or direction on these issues, maybe we, um, meet with the planning board if we decide to go and ward an article to kind of clean these roads up. Maybe we meet with the planning board, um, or conservation, maybe whatever boards we feel are relevant and kind of say, of these, I think the map shows seven right now that are discontinued, not subject to bars and gates prior to nineteen fifty.
Okay.
Or fifty-three. Um, you know, if we bring those up, that may be something we look at and say, what are buildable, what are not buildable, how have these roads been honored since they were discontinued? Um, just those kind of questions and just sort of clean this up.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's just sort of one of those looming issues that we sort of clear what we can, if we don't, we don't, but we get the, we get our homework. So I have been in the archives, right now I'm just trying to determine where the court of common pleas was filed and what it evolved into. So there's a lot of evolution questions in this, but some of the information is easily accessible. I think I got a hundred and some odd pages from Jan, from the towns that I've been deciphering through them, trying to read. Seventeen eighty-five, cursive. So.
That's a whole new level.
It is, but I mean, it's, we're trying to do the homework, trying to do it the right way, see what we can clarify, what we can't, if anything was overseen.
Yeah.
And then figuring out what the next steps are. Hopefully the NHMA class will sort of answer some of the ambiguous questions I have, or at least steer it in direction. And then we can figure out our next step on how we want to deal with those. And then we said there were seventeen roads, uh, I think the map.
I'll list from Wade Man, there was seventeen.
Yep.
Roads that, uh, were done before the nineteen sixty or sixty-two or whatever launch age.
Yeah.
And why are you saying seven?
Because our, our current, where, where, the roadmap, the current roadmap we have that NHMA, or not NHMA, sorry, uh, Central Manchester Planning put out in twenty-three, only reflects seven of them.
Okay.
So it shows seven is discontinued, and I believe.
Oh, gosh.
Nine or ten discontinued post nineteen fifty, subjects to bars and gates. So it's just different definitions and, and, you know, we're just trying to figure out where the, where the void was or, you know, did we miss a piece of paperwork, was it done correctly, and we're just not interpreting the law? Because we have to kind of go back and say, hey, this, this RSA, which was a CS in eighteen fifty stated this. What did that evolve into at the time of the meeting? It's just a lot of playing law and order detective on it and trying to figure out at the time of it being voted on, was it voted on accordingly? Or, you know, in correlation with the way that the RSA's were at the time.
Well, thank you for being willing to take all this out, I'm not sure Alice would echo my thanks, but, um.
Alice is right there in the room.
Trying to set.
Thank you, thanks, well.
Eighteen, whatever.
No, I mean, it's, it's really, it's actually not, it is time consuming, but it's really interesting to see, you know, and seeing over our past. But, no, hopefully, hopefully that meeting in a couple of weeks, we get a little bit more light on it and then, uh, pick a direction to move in.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Keep this posted.
Well, seven roads seems manageable anyway.
You'll be teaching.
Or seven next year.
Seven or seventeen, but seven sounds more manageable than seventeen, which sounds more manageable than fifty, which is the number that was going around first, so. Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Alright, anything further?
Um, on discontinued.
Discontinued roads, yeah.
Oh, not for me.
Yep, that'll bring us to Sam Lake House Garage Bids.
Yep, um, so we sent out the notice, uh, invitation bid, it was posted on the website.
Yep.
And in town email, um, posted at the town office. I have received, um, two bids from contractors right here. Um, I'll give them to you.
They need to be read aloud?
Um, yeah, the bids, the date, uh, it was specified in the invitation bid that, uh, you guys would be opening the bids on May fifth.
Correct.
So, um, we're not gonna accept any more bids on this, this afterwards.
I do have a question about that though, since you did get, have, get contacted by somebody who said they sent you it and you didn't receive it. Could there be anyone else to be at, should we say, did you send us something that we have? And we want somebody else legitimately sent a bid that.
I have not been contacted by anybody else that was interested in that.
Okay.
The person that had emailed me the, their bid and then let me know, they had let me know they were interested in it. They had talked to me about the invitation bid, they'd come down, they did a site visit. And then when the, um, they told me they were gonna send it that night, or that day.
Oh, okay, so you were looking.
I was waiting for it and it didn't come, so I contacted them and said, hey, I didn't get it. And so we went back and forth and he did send it.
Okay.
I got it.
I was just curious if anything else might have gotten lost that week.
Nobody else has, has come for a site visit or expressed interest of them releasing two contractors.
And they both came for site visits?
They both came for site visits, yes.
Good.
Alright, Ken, looking at this, so short, is it Galatas?
Uh, Glatis.
Galatas?
Yeah.
So that's in the amount of fifty-eight thousand dollars, although I note, um, he's got an additional cost for synthetic slate, additional cost for party board, and additional cost for party board cement.
So the, the, uh, scope of work asked for, um, options for slate roof versus asphalt.
Yep.
And for cement siding versus cedar siding.
Okay.
Um, at the town office, when they rebuilt it, they used cement siding. Um, and so I asked for, and they used slate roof. So we, we asked for options, um, for that.
Okay. No, there was such a thing as synthetic slate, doesn't surprise me, but.
I didn't either.
I remember that, I've never seen that.
You can fake anything, though.
Yeah.
Oh, I would think, I would think you could. I think synthetic was matched, even if it was not slate-like material, but the color.
Think the HDC, you know, way in, anything extra.
And that would be the, I think, no.
Kevin had stated in the last meeting, we have that they'd like to have a glance at what was coming.
Yeah.
Now, does that number include any of the subcontractors or that's just?
Those a lot include the electrical or HVAC.
Correct.
I have those, they, those are separate bids.
Well, that's a, I mean. I'd like more than a minute, two minutes to read through all that and figure out what it means, but, okay. And he's, um.
I have, I have the scope of work here, if you want to look at that.
Okay.
Compare it.
Why does, um, this name sound so familiar though, has he done work for the town before?
The, uh, gutters on the scroll.
Oh, okay, that's why. Why is eight feet highlighted here? Was that after our conversation?
Yeah, there was a question about it and I highlighted it, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was what the interior dimensions were.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just compare with that. Are we, um, oh, is that the second bid?
Second bid, yeah. This looks much bigger.
I think so. Is that it?
That's it.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so second bid is from Shanker Heights Custom Homes LLC in Vosklen. And it says bid price per spec sheet with thirty-year asphalt shingle, cedar siding, and shingles. Electrical and HVAC by others, forty-nine thousand dollars. Cement siding would reduce quote by fifteen hundred dollars. Signed by Daniel Revellard. That's it?
Well, we didn't feel the need to repeat what was scripted out here, so a man of efficiency. Do you have any, um, I mean, Mr., uh, how do you say that first one?
Galatas.
Galatas?
Galatas.
Other than doing the gutters, do you have, do you have any recommendations on either of these terms?
He has all, he also did some work at the Nissan building, repaired some of the roof leaks up there.
Yeah.
And he did some work at the, um, Alkalis Memorial Building, the fun staff, he did some work over there.
Okay.
Um, that's, he's a very busy person, so I'm guessing that, you know, I, I haven't gotten any, I didn't ask for recommendation letters, um, I, I asked for bids and this is what it was. I did not ask for recommendation.
Well, the town has at least worked with him before, but.
Yep, yep.
I'd be hesitant and just, um, but you met with him, Mr. Revellard?
I have seen his work and it's quality work. He's built a whole bunch of houses in Vosklen and, um, the last one sold for six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well. Sometimes that means quality work, most of the time, yes, I would think.
Yeah, um, like you say, he's built a whole bunch of houses in Vosklen, um, the building is spec. Um, the building inspectors over there like him.
Okay.
Do we need to decide tonight?
Um, you don't need to decide tonight. Um, I did explain to both of them that we couldn't do any interior work until after August first.
Yup.
They could do the roof probably if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Uh, before then.
Yup.
And maybe the exterior, um, if they, they felt they wanted to do that. But, um, that the interior work couldn't be done until after August first because the fair has asked that they wait until after the fair so they can step on.
Yeah.
I do have bids from two electricians. And again, I, they both, both of these people came and did site visits. Um, they have both worked for the town before. Um, they've both done good work for the town.
Alright, so the first one is Copperhead Electrical Services in Loudon. And the, uh, estimate is in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm assuming, Ken, that this sixty amp panel matches what we called out.
Yup.
That includes the trenching conduit, the whole string?
Correct. Well, I told them that the town would dig the trench. They would provide the conduit and, but the town, the road agent, the RV apparently would dig the trench.
Gotcha. Nice new backup.
With a new backup, yeah.
I like this. I think you might end up with a few rodents in this building, I think. Um, I didn't see in the scope, did, uh, did you bring up anywhere the, um, the parking, the additional parking outside?
I did not.
That's not them anyway, correct?
And that came up afterwards.
Yeah.
So I didn't, that wasn't included when we sent out.
And I would assume what, um, we're talking about, we could do our town crew.
I think our town crew could do that if we needed to, yeah.
That makes more sense.
If, uh, if it's gonna be trucks back in there and stuff doing construction, I guess is, law's gonna get, kind of, up a little bit. Now we're trying to do the time, but, I, I have it probably be able to do that.
Yup. Alright, second estimate is from Trust Electrical Services LLC in Stratford, New Hampshire in the amount of six thousand dollars.
Does the first one say this is estimated cost to dig a trench, but didn't you just say we're digging the trench?
Yeah, and that was included there and, and again, I, I think he did understand that the town was gonna dig that, so.
So both included digging a trench?
Mm-hmm.
No, no, first one was.
Six hundred bucks, yeah.
So that's together, that, um, what else is in the cost that, that doesn't, that doesn't bring us up to the eighty thousand from the trust?
Does not. The only thing it's not, that we did not get bids on is the HVAC.
Okay.
Which, um, I have some notes here. I contacted two companies, they both said they were gonna get back to me. I didn't hear from them. Um, just as a, for reference, the HVAC at the meeting house in twenty-two, uh, was seventy-five hundred dollars. The, the same thing at, and that was for the meeting house, they ended up at the fire station. Um, and then in twenty-three, we did the one on the side from Historical Society and that was sixty-seven hundred dollars. So even, even if these prices go up to ten thousand, we still are at the eighty thousand mark.
Right.
Given the bids, all the bids put together, yeah.
One thing I'd be concerned about is addressing the lead. And what if they have to re-sheet everything? And the costs, I mean, if, if, if the town decides, for instance, the first one, fifty-eight thousand, if you put the add-ons, the slate group and the RV, you're looking at another twenty-five thousand on top of that, so you're already pushing the envelope.
Yup. And again, that's, I, I asked for those options so you guys can determine what you love to do.
And are those options up to us or is that still up to your district?
Options are up to you guys.
Oh.
Well, we know the window, like, are we just getting Home Depot windows or are we getting Marvin's, just like, I'd like to see explanation of what you're getting.
Take that foot. Put in the swoop. I think it was just, scope was just like matching. Energy efficient. I put replace existing with energy efficient double home vinyl exterior, same style as Sam Lake House. Not same make, but same style. Energy efficient, double home. Um, one of the questions the HVAC, in HVAC companies both asked, what was the, what would be the temperature we wanted that building at? Um, I told them it was for secure file storage. We don't anticipate that being office space, but we're gonna insulate it and uh, I gave them the dimensions of the windows that are there now, so to do a heat loss. Um, and I told them, you know, sixty-eight would be a, a temperature we want, wanted at for heating and cooling to keep it relatively, you know, safe. My guess is we would probably have it at fifty or, or something like that for most time, but.
I'd be curious, the spray foam cost versus insulation as well? Go out the building tight and the whole, you spray foam that thing, it'd be pretty efficient.
Yeah, I mean, again, we, we had a budget we were working with, so I didn't, I know that spray foam is, uh, is more efficient, but again, it's more costly and if we're not gonna be, it's a small space, it won't be heating at sixty degrees or sixty-five degrees, then I didn't see that it was, is it worth the extra money that a spray foam?
You'd be able to weigh it better on that than me?
Like insulation wise, I'd rather, if we're not using spray foam, I'd like to see rock wool or something in there that's gonna be a barn, you know, more barn, I mean, I appreciate the estimates, I just, there's certain things that kind of leave me wanting more, like for instance, on one of the estimates, it was fifteen hundred dollars cheaper if they went with cement board.
Yeah.
What siding is he using that is fifteen hundred dollars cheaper to go with cement board? You know, like, there's just certain things I'd like to clarify.
Okay.
That's all.
I can find out. I mean, I, I can give details. What do you want me to, go in and check with the contractor and say, what kind of cement siding you're using?
Yeah, just, just manufacturer. Or what, what are we doing? Cedar? We doing prime cedar? What's coming in there? Pine?
Well, it was cedar, the, 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 um, specs called for cedar.
Okay.
Prime cedar.
So probably three bucks a linear foot then?
I don't know. I, like I said, I left this up to the.
But I'm concerned right now, the way that.
The other ones are supposed to do the pricing on it.
I, I know, I'm just saying that trend right now with where that stuff comes from and what the costs are going. Even if we accept it, do we have any leeway that?
There's nothing in here that says that these bids are good for
Okay.
thirty days, ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, nothing like that.
Okay.
I, it specifies in that invitation bid that you guys would be opening the bids time. Um, I, my guess is they would be anticipating that you would make a decision soon.
Well, cause they would need to know, so they.
They would need to know.
They would schedule and buy.
Yeah, yeah.
So my suggestion is, um, for both of you, let's answer any questions this week.
Yeah.
And then let's make a decision.
Yeah, I would think so. Um, and, and I would defer to, well, both you and you've done construction, you yourself, as to, you know, if we need to get more specific about what they're putting in. Energy efficient, what does that really mean? To me, it means a whole range of things, so, um.
I mean, you could go to Home Depot, get an energy efficient window for four hundred fifty bucks, or you could go spend eighteen hundred dollars on the same size window from another company.
Well, I guess this is why I sent that scope out to you guys before I sent it out.
Yeah.
To ask for input on it.
Yeah.
I didn't get any, so.
No, no, and, and you're right, I, I was not sure I would have even known then to ask, but when you see what they come back with, um, I, I think the, um, Mr. Galatas seems to be a lot more specific about what he's using. So, um, personally, I would, um, ask him for a little, he seems like he might have the information readily available as to if he has a product that he buys.
You guys email me your questions if you would like me to
Yes.
send to the contractors.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we get a copy of those two bids?
I can make copies of it and send it to you guys. And then I will send the questions out to the contractors. And can I let them know that you will make the decision at the next meeting?
Oh, certainly by then, yeah.
I think that's a good way to do it. Thank you.
Can we do that, um, soon then, that? Well, I guess it would depend on when they get back to us.
Right, we'd have to call them, um, especially. It'd have to be noticed.
Oh.
Yeah, like, I know everybody bids differently, like, I know when I've bid, I bid products. So I just, in my mind, I wanna know what's being used that justifies the, the eleven thousand dollar difference in cost. Is it labor?
Alright, anything further on that?
I do not believe so. Well, next meeting's just two weeks, so that's not too bad. Or should we be back then? It's not a three-week difference, it's.
So if I could ask you guys to send your questions by end of business Thursday? So I can get it out to the contractors and I can give them a week to get back to me?
Yes.
Yup, I think that's fair. Thank you.
So now I have to go to the NHMA, how to, no, we need a, how to do construction.
Alright, update on three sixty-seven shade room?
Um, yes, I, let's see here. Uh, spoke with the owners, um, they felt that they were not violating zoning. And sent it off to our attorney. And our attorney sent back, uh, a draft of a cease and desist letter that he'd like to send to them. Um, he had a couple of questions, but that's a draft of the cease and desist letter that he'd like to send.
And as far as we know, that subject is still residing.
As far as we know. So if you approve of this, um, I'll notify the attorney, they will send the letter. Um, and depending on what the response is from the property owner, from the business owner, that would be how we would respond.
Yeah.
And as you, um, we, uh, I had asked you this morning how that's actually being sent, so it'll be certified and regular?
It would be sent from the attorney's office to the property owner, certified and regular now. Yeah.
So there's still be a bit of time before this can be, yeah?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Tyson Miller's waiting.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I was gonna send it.
Agreed.
That's okay?
Alright. Thank you.
That off to your attorney in the morning.
Alright, and thank you to whoever remembered to put CPC and H representative on tonight's agenda.
That would be me.
Thank you.
It makes me nervous.
Yes, I agree.
So the question is, uh, Scott, are you the alternate?
I am the alternate.
Um, and we're approaching the time of year when they're going to be meeting to set, setting the rates or discussing the rates.
Yup.
And if you can't attend or aren't gonna attend, then we need to find somebody that will.
We, we do need to find somebody, so that was actually a discussion that I had quite a while ago.
Yeah.
So, and there was never a alternate member found, I'm, I'm not sure. It all seemed to languish. So we need a representative and we need an alternate, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
And do you have a grasp on this, a, a better grasp on the schedule of when things need to be actually done so we don't miss? I mean, Ken and I looked at the calendar today to see when their meetings were and things, but, um, you know, what's our drop date for finding people so we don't miss the next rate setting date?
So I, I didn't see on that calendar, I looked out into September and I didn't see, they haven't scheduled a meeting yet, but I can see when they're having those meetings.
Yeah.
Right. I can contact them to find out, to see if they have that, um, scheduled. Um, I mean, the only other thing we could do is advertise, town email, newsletter.
Yeah.
Um, website, looking for somebody, um, contractor, you'll talk to them.
Well, Fred, Fred is also concerned enough that he may well want to do that, or the other, um, um, I've got an energy committee and CPC, a CPC coming up, so
Yeah.
uh, between our collective brains, um, see if they have somebody that they dealt with who might want to step in and then they may very well know more the schedule, because it seemed like last, it seems like every, the two times that it's come up, it's been like all of a sudden a flurry of activity and la, la, we have to decide like now.
So this happened back in, it was like July?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had to have, like, they had their meeting on Tuesday?
Yeah.
You guys met the call on Monday or? Or did you guys meeting on Monday and they're having their meeting on Tuesday? It's a real short deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah. So their director resigned suddenly, right, because of, I guess, some health, at least health and the family issues. And they're definitely in a state of flux, I would call it as well.
They had a long-term director.
Having her.
Right, yeah.
Um, but we, we need someone to represent us that has time. One of the issues is their meetings are always during the day on a weekday. So, you know, that, um, that makes it difficult for a lot of people to attend. They do usually offer a remote option, Zoom or whatever system. Still, it's at least an hour per meeting, so.
Okay. And then, um, well, actually, that's a good thing to know, one hour meetings, weekly, monthly, quarterly?
They were, in the very beginning, they were probably monthly, um, but I, I don't think that, they've been irregular, um, is, is my memory lately.
Um, well, what I will do is I will, um, gently harass or, or re-reach out to Tom Franco.
Yeah.
Um, again, and see if he's got it better. And quite frankly, if nobody minds me asking Howard, uh, I'll reach out to Howard and say, you know, who do you, like, what's, what's a realistic time
Yeah.
frame, because it, you know, knowing what it actually, the commitment is, is better, is easier to find a person
Yup.
to fill in.
Yup.
So if that's okay, I'll reach out to those two people and.
Sounds good to me.
And see, and, and someone like, um, uh, somebody on the committee maybe who stepped off because they weren't willing to do the full committee work, might be able to step on and just do this one thing.
Yeah.
So, if we have an, and then that might be somebody who's, uh, familiar enough with the process.
Yup.
So, I'll, I'll do that.
Thank you.
And I'll mark it in green.
Alright. Alright, reading is. The last thing that I had is land acknowledgement, and I think that was some further information from Evan, wasn't it?
Yes. Um, it was, um, a lot of the links, well, a lot of, I followed the link to our. If you click on the link in there and you go to the indigenousnewhampshire.com/landacknowledgement, it's the Indigenous New Hampshire Collaborative Collective, um, which was a very interesting read, um, about the background of how the collective was formed. The thing, I went through and the things I highlighted were, um, they are big on knowing, um, that the land acknowledgement be accompanied, accompanied by actions, not just a token, and they don't know what that really means. I'm, I'm hesitant about just jumping into it because it sounds like a really good idea and not knowing if we're actually committing to something more than we expect. That's the only, that's the only hesitation I have. I think it's great, um, the, the, um, plaques look wonderful, the wording is good. Um, you're honoring the people who were here first, that is all good, but I just, I, I don't know what that means, if it means anything in a bigger sense, other than an acknowledgement. Because that doesn't seem to be what they want. Um, and if we're, if we're doing something that this group is, um, proposing, you know, or if Evan is using this group to, to, to outline his proposal, I just wanna make sure what we're getting into, so that's all. So, um, one of the questions that they themselves asked is, why are you doing a land acknowledgement? What's the goal? Why is this important to you? And I think, you know, that's an important question for us to answer. And, um, and do we want to, I mean, um, Evan is a fine student and, and concerned with this, which is great, but is there someone from the communities themselves that we need to get involved with? And is that what Evan's proposing? So is he proposing just a plaque or, or more than that? And that's, that's the second step that I don't know about, that I'd like him to answer.
Okay.
Cause I think the plaques are fine, the wording is beautiful, there's a lot of communities out on the seacoast that have them, um, and that's great, but I, is it, is it just an empty gesture? I don't know if, if, do they want more than that? I just, the, the background reading that he, was very interesting, so.
I did not get a chance to look at the backgrounds. I had nothing to add.
I, I think, you know, again, I'd like to hear from Evan and, and he doesn't necessarily need to come in again, but if you just say, look, what's, what's your, what's your plan here?
Do you wanna send an email to Evan? You're gonna see much?
I do, cause he's on the tri-entanglement ready.
Do you ask him to respond?
Like, my to-do list is getting as long as ten, not, not nearly as long as. I believe. And I could ask, uh, he'll probably be at the next meeting too, but I'll send him an email before then.
Yeah. Alright, anything further on that?
Not on that, not for me.
Anyone else have any old order business?
Yes. If you let me finish writing this note. I let me read, otherwise it will never get done. That got answered. Um, did the letter go out to the Mies?
No.
Okay. And Cal, did you get a, a reliable email for John Schneider?
Uh, oh, no, he had a contact soon.
There is.
I've been asking you had a contact soon, and I'm like, I don't know how to contact.
If you look at the roster at twenty twenty-four, it's got phone numbers for the planning board.
His phone numbers, so you could call him, but the email address, he still apparently has a canavarynh.gov.
No, he doesn't.
He doesn't?
He does.
Then there, I've just got two phone numbers for him.
Okay. Uh, okay. One of those is cell phone, so I'm assuming that you'd be texting on that or calling? Okay, yes. And that was it.
True.
Uh, I think. Yes. Yes, that's it.
Alright, Calvin, anything for you? Ken? Cal? Alright. Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.